Seven o'clock and I think what we'll do is we'll start the public hearing. And I'm asking Richard and Andrea to give us a little background again. And I'm not sure of your name. Are you here for the public hearing?
That's just my mom.
Oh, you were. And you probably don't want to watch the video.
Just my mom.
Perfect. And so you go forward, give your little spiel again and then bring us up to date. If there's anything changed, then we'll go probably just close it at that point. See if there's not going to be a lot of questions and we'll open up our questions when we have our actual meeting.
Okay.
All right, go to it.
So basically, we're looking to create a rustic barn wedding venue. And also have our primary residents here. We'd like to be able to host indoor and outdoor events. So if somebody wants to set up a tent or have it outside, kind of a nice big field area, be able to do both of those things. We don't plan to do any cooking in there. We don't plan to have people stay overnight or anything like that. The general size of the barn is 78 by 70, as is now. And I think that we basically feel like we're probably going to affect up to 10 acres of the land, of 85 acres. So we really kind of felt like that's a great piece of land for what we're looking to do. What we're looking to do, we don't want to affect the community in any negative way, right? And we're actually hopeful that some of creating this wedding venue brings opportunity to the community in the opposite direction, right? So whether you're a landscaper, or a hairstylist, a florist, a caterer, a band, you know, there's lots of different, I think, options for people there. I think that's really kind of, I'll keep it short and sweet, I suppose, you know, but I welcome any questions you have. An open book, where an open book will tell you anything you can.
All right, since there's nobody here who is from the public.
Except for mom.
Maybe I should add, does mom have questions? Is she wondering about this? And I think what I will do is close the public part of the meeting and then when we'll turn around and bring it back and if we can bring up our questions amongst ourselves and have these guys respond to it at that point. Unless I'm out of line with that, what do you think?
Sounds good.
Okay, all right. So I'm going to then close the public hearing, seeing that there's nobody here to ask questions. And I'm going to open up the regular meeting and I'm going to ask at least to start if you would take a look at the minutes. And if you haven't had a chance to read them, do those please and then I'll look for a motion to accept them.
How will these artists be verified and started? I said one dimensional.
Is there a motion out there? No, except that. A second?
Second.
Questions, comments? One question I have to bring up, I think, is the, on the best practical locations, the votes stated it's at 401. We're going to change those to 302 because there were two abstentions from two people last meeting because they had not gone and done the site visits. So that each one of those 401s become 302s. Any other changes or corrections? Okay, all those in favor? Good, thank you. So good, 5-0 again. And the second thing before we jump right back into the wedding barn is, what we want to attempt is the, how to work the voting of the alternates. And there's been a suggestion anyway that perhaps what we do, and Joyce is not here, but Lincoln, at least you are, is assign one of the two meetings each month to a particular alternate. So then, being that you are here today, you would vote today, go from there, and then the next meeting, which would be the first one in October, would be Joyce. Okay? And I realize that at some point, sometimes, you may not even be voting because everybody may be here. I get that. But I also get the fact that it's difficult to kind of make the judgment as to who's voting when and that kind of a thing. This may not correct it, we may change it, but at least we'll give it a shot. Okay? All right. All right, back to the wedding venue. We're going to bring that back up on the table for the meeting and I'll throw it out to any of you, questions, comments to ask, this is the time. Go to it.
Just had one quick one that I raised, I think, one of our last previous meetings, was that little area of waste oil that was, I don't know where it came from, but either you folks or Van within the conditions, make sure that's removed somewhere. Okay. But it's kind of a hazard, it's not a problem.
Does it large stop, I don't remember the house width?
Probably like three feet diameter.
It's almost like cable size.
Oh, really?
I mean, I thought, it's hard to knock deep into it, so.
Yeah.
It's just like wood chip under there, kind of tilted down. We'll try to know.
Richard, I have no idea what the process is for that, but we can, it just seems on your behalf as well.
Yeah, yeah, we'd like to turn that area into a field and whatnot, so I think it's only going to make sense.
I agree with you, yeah. Anybody else? I guess one of the other conditions that we had discussed somewhere along the line, and I think maybe it's even addressed in here, but I want to put it so that it's in the minutes too, is the idea of replacing that culvert that works its way across the driveway. And so I want to make sure that that shows under the conditions too, Brenda? Okay?
So we replace the same side, same location?
Well, any suggestions from anybody?
Adequate driveway that needs to find a chiefs.
You talking about driveway now, itself?
Correct.
Okay, I had a couple of things about the driveway itself that I wanted to add to. Specifically, the culvert, as far as the culvert's concerned, is there a minimum at this stage in time to do?
Usually you look at the area size wise, what's draining into it, and I'm on the assumption it's required, but I really haven't looked at it to see if it was put in for no reason, I doubt it. But just look at the size and it hasn't washed out, it hasn't blown out, it's just crushed, so I would think the size of it's adequate.
This is the one that's interior from the edge, so.
Yeah, it's where the stream crosses.
Yeah, okay. I didn't pay attention this morning when I went into stream rail, but is the state getting down into your driveway proposed area with their ditching?
I wouldn't think they'd be very much, it's pretty well ditched now, the shoulder comes out and goes down pretty good, they have more up from halfway at the road.
Has the, has the design come back from DOT on the site entrance?
No, not yet.
Still hasn't come back yet?
Just so you, you may be already aware, but the state is doing a real complete job, it seems from, I don't know how far up they want to, dreadlocks, I guess.
I'll lay it down, but I don't know still. They were working right down by the river.
Doing what looks like rather drastic stormwater management along the.
Yeah, I've seen a lot of it even around us in Rochester actually, you know, throughout the summer.
Anybody else? Or I can come. The other one that I have a concern about, I guess, is the driveway and the hill, you know, kind of coming back down to Milton Mills Road. I'd like to see a way that we can inhibit speed coming down that hill to some degree. I mean, I know that you're not going to use paint and you're going to kind of bring it down, but I'd like it to be at least a little bit of up and down to make people think, excuse me, a little bit about their driving.
You think something like a concrete speed bump or something like that, that we put in might suffice with a sign or something like that?
Yeah, you know, and I don't even know that I'm looking necessarily for that much, but just not making it level. You know, and I mean, I don't mean level, but I mean, you know, coming down without bumps. And it's a little up and down, as I remember anyway. And as long, I'd like to see that, you know, if there were curves, I can't remember to be honest, if there was just a gentle curve going up. But I just, I, I spent a lot of time in the summer, you know, the roads bumpy, people complain about this bumpy, but the good side is all the people who are there don't get people flying down this road. And I mean, there's something to that. Okay, so I throw that out there as a kind of a condition if you guys are, you know, amenable to it.
Yeah, I mean, totally open to it, I guess I'll, you know, can, is that something we can kind of work on in terms of like what it actually looks like as we get up there? You know, because totally open to the point, understand kind of what you're asking for, not 100% sure how to accomplish it, I guess.
Without, I mean, you'd drive for a nice flat area surface or coming in and out, but I see what you're saying.
Late at night, you know, coming down the hill, all of a sudden, you know, you tend to be paying attention to speed and you're going a little faster than you should be.
And you're talking the driveway?
Yeah, I'm talking about the driveway specifically, because it's coming down, you know, not a steep hill, but downhill. But I mean, I'd be happy to let, you know, you guys work that out, I'm not trying to aim for a specific thing, kind of thing, but just to keep it in the back of your mind as you're working on the design. Get for it.
I think we'll do it just simply inside it.
That's what I was.
Well, that's what I was wondering, yeah.
Posit person, older person that just yells. Not long.
What did she do?
That's the bride, she's late.
One of the other things that we need to, I think, at least to put into the minutes would be the idea of the stormwater mitigation steps. And we've talked about that, I know you guys are up on all of that, but again, I want to make sure that that goes in under the conditions for the minutes.
Yep, absolutely. And kind of left it with the previous person I was working with, hey, once, you know, if we secure approval, we'll be right back in touch with you to kind of come over with our full plan.
Anybody else have concerns or thoughts?
Do you guys do any thinking about the parking lot? Just the distance to the wetland in the back? I think we wanted at least, I think I was saying at least a 25 foot. Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, I think that makes a lot of sense. I was looking at the ordinance, trying to look at, and this is in shoreline zone here, right? But I was, you have some circulations out there and I think the smallest section was about 50 feet wide. And that's for, you know, not what they call forested shrub wetlands, it's for, I don't remember the terminology, but you know, something that you see standing water in, right? So I was thinking that what we agreed to last time was be fine.
Do you be fine with 50 feet or something?
I mean, I prefer to move it less, but you know.
Either 125 or 50 would be fine.
Yeah.
And the, did you think about dividing up the gravel area into maybe with a vegetated bar in the middle, like people parked in two parking lots, almost with a little.
Yeah, what do you think about, like, let's say that it was grass with some trees in between, is that kind of what you're looking for?
Something vegetated, it'd be more sightly too, probably.
I agree with you.
A giant parking lot full of cars and.
Yeah.
A little more private, people, you know, doing their own thing.
Yep, happy to do that.
Just seems like it would probably be cooler in the parking lot.
So we talk of in between every single.
Um, it's on page 13, I think.
You'd be fine with just one or two larger.
Right, I was going to say, because I just don't want the parking lot to take over.
Well, and then you go to flower or something, and it's just a more designed well, but you know.
Yeah.
It seems like you have like four kind of rows of parking.
Correct.
Two bigger ones in the middle and so on.
Yep. Yes, I mean, we could split that even. Maybe between the two ones in the middle or something, in between kind of the parking spots, right? So, so what I'm just trying to, exactly, yeah, so there and then maybe the top one as well, or not the top one, but the second one up.
Second big one.
Yeah, so those two sections, the same, we could split like that and put an area of grass and put in some trees and some shrubs and whatnot, so.
He's a big fan of trees.
I, yeah.
Doesn't take much to be like, let's do it!
And the lawn that you're going to take out of that parking area in order to put the gravel down, what do you plan to do with the lawn?
Honestly, hopefully reuse it, right? So whether it be to create the field in the upper area even for our own, you know, home in the, you know, front yard and whatnot, that's my plan to reuse it or to somehow landscape with it.
Yeah, that would be our preference, that you keep it on site and not sell it. Because you put in a fair amount of lawn digging up that large an area.
Yep. Yeah, no, I'm fine with that, if we were keeping, no plans to sell it.
Did we talk at all about where the residence is located in relation to the business?
So we kind of just, I think, pointed it out as we were walking, we're looking to be, we haven't nailed it down, but I think a couple hundred feet in from the road, we don't want to be able to see.
It will utilize the same driveway?
Yeah.
Yes, so we'll branch off of it though, so it won't be like right on the road coming in.
Yeah, as we identified where the wetlands were, we kind of weren't sure, hey, where can we go with this house without disturbing some of those wetlands? So as we've identified it now, it seems to fit a lot better as you kind of go up the driveway to see if it's all right. Yeah, just kind of bear off to the right.
Anybody else?
Oh, that's, yeah, that's a pretty good, good one to show where the house would be, your talk is over in here, probably.
Exactly, yeah.
So, so then before, what has, what, how far can these guys go, assuming they're approved tonight, before they get, before the DOT gets back to them?
Do you guys plan on doing much construction activity this year or?
I thought this year is just clearing some trees and kind of getting prepared for when the spring comes of actually breaking ground. So that's.
I mean, on the driveway and stuff like that, they have a lot of. Just like what do you think, start doing?
Yeah. So you have no problems then having them move forward to some degree anyway without?
No, once we get past you guys, then we'll be able to work it out together.
Anybody else with comments or questions or concerns? Is there a motion that, I want to do the motion, even go back and do those statements?
To throw it, we want to set a decimal reading at the property lines in case we have.
As a condition?
Heavy metal battle of the bands weekend.
Darn it!
Just want to make sure the limit.
Turn it down at 10 or 11.
Some fishing.
I mean, anybody else? We know that it's seven days a week, we have not stated much about time of those days. Anybody have any thoughts about that?
We usually do 60, 60 decimals because I thought the parter would want to read.
Oh, you're back, sorry, right, yes.
I think that's a 60, 60 really easy space that you won't have a problem with.
Yeah, I was such a distance. I think when I did that, we were all the way down to like 35 decimals, where at the section we were at like 95, more even to the property line. And that's, you know, wide open, right? That's no building or anything like that, so.
And I think the noise is going to regulate the hours of operation.
Not necessarily, because if it's a wedding that doesn't go off until 4 o'clock in the afternoon. I know I've heard weddings have gone until 2:00 in the morning.
And I guess that's where I was looking, if they're quiet and staying in that area, does the planning board care? Or do you want to set a time that you want everyone off your property, or do you?
Well, maybe, maybe we could do like a start time just for neighbors or something, I don't know. Like you wouldn't have people coming in till 10:00 in the morning, is that realistic? Or what is your timing look like in the morning?
It depends on, I mean, you can have a bridal room there at 6:00 AM, for all I know, setting up, so we wouldn't really want to limit them.
Yeah, but that obviously wouldn't be, you know, like a lot of people there.
Well, hang on, you know, and trucks bring in equipment and doing setup and stuff for tables and chairs and stuff like that.
Yeah, exactly.
I mean, I can't promise you that no one will ever ask for a sunrise wedding, but it's not something we need to stipulate ahead of time.
Okay, yeah. I don't know what we need to come up with.
Well, that's what I was saying, if it's quiet and contained on the site.
Or if we get complaints or something, maybe we do have to look at it.
If we have complaints, generally speaking, it'll be above the decimal level, we're covered there anyway.
If we put time constraints on them, that's going to limit what they can actually book there.
Sure, sure.
Because we keep coming back to a wedding, but in reality, it's a place of assembly. Which, who knows, the Scranton booking event or something like that. I think if you have somebody that wants to rent you a barn, you're going to want the event.
Right.
Sure, yeah, no, absolutely.
Richard did some homework for us on the decimal level on page 14.
The whole booklet's complete.
Thank you.
We tried. Amazing.
We did have some fun with weed lacquer out there. You know, where it rubs makes a good sense for where it should be and what's not going to cause, because I don't want to make noise for my neighbor.
The wind blowing makes a huge difference too.
Yeah, it does.
So you guys are really okay with not having kitchen facilities at this place?
So we plan on having a kitchen prep area, so I mean, if someone wanted to do a barbecue and the caterer wants to bring like their own, some type of kit or smoker out, we wouldn't necessarily say no to that, but we're not having, you know, an oven and a stove inside of the building. But I know some people do like lobster bakes right on site for certain weddings, so I won't say that that we would say no to, but we don't plan on having our own kitchen facility to do our own catering.
Does the board care if they have a kitchen or not? I would restrict it for, in case.
Yeah, I mean, I don't personally, I don't know about the board in general, I.
I think that's a decision that we'd probably wait later on, depending on how the business takes off. I mean, if, it could be a moot thing if, you know, if you don't get the number of bookings that you anticipate.
Right.
Or if you get a lot, you might want to put a kitchen in.
Maybe we'll see you back in a few years.
I mean, before I left, you know, I'm going to put it in there a lot.
Right, so it'd be just an expansion of the use and it would be able to work through our office versus prohibiting it and then you have to come back versus.
Right, good. Anything else?
Dumpster on site?
That's the plan, yeah. We plan to ask all the vendors to take, basically carry and carry out, but it was obviously going to be trash leftovers, so we plan to have a dumpster that's prepped up by, you know, waste manager or similar vendor.
Let's go back to that fire pit idea, a lobster bake type thing or fire pits in general. There must be something as far as the fire department is concerned.
They had it in their business model that any outside fires would be worked, would be activated by them. And permitting would be required for that.
What happens if you get a time of the year, no rain for a period of time, or weddings are booked to do that, what happens then if there's no?
Fire department would decline to approve a permit, I assume.
Yep, they can get a seasonal permit and campfires, they usually have a huge leeway with the campfires. But I suppose if it was a concern enough, they could even ask for a fire watch, somebody in 10, you know, they would pay for them to come down and maintain and watch. But at that point, if it was that dry, they may not want it. And I think a lot of those, like debates are more of a chuckle than a brush. Because the feelings I get from this applicant is they're more concerned about the area than we are. And I don't, I'm anticipating they don't want to burn the forest down.
I do want more trees to grow.
Nor do we want to burn the building down.
Yeah. The building would need insurance, I don't think they.
Insurance, but I don't really want to go.
No, we're going to have a lot of sweating tears.
I know you want it a wedding next week.
Send the squidge first.
Yeah.
The parking area, they were trying to limit the light as much as practical, so I would just say the parking facility is lit with down light, so there's no wash coming off of it. All the lighting will be down versus washed out, so it doesn't look like a shopping mall from the ridges.
No lighting on the driveway, because that's a pretty likely, you know.
You guys are.
You know, you're coming in at late at night.
No, there's no.
We don't, we kind of wanted to work with you guys to figure out what we needed to do, you know, I've been at some other rustic weddings and some they have larger lights and some they just have little ones, so I don't necessarily know what's required or.
We wanted to be careful, like, we wanted to be let walk, safety is, you know, important number one, right? But I also don't want to go take a light that's in a Walmart parking lot and put it in our, you know, parking area because it just doesn't, doesn't fit with the rural kind of nature of what we have going on there. So hopefully we can find some kind of medium ground, you know.
The light pollution's been big, especially the last 10 or 15 years, that there's good shields on it, it's down lighting and I think the fixtures you're going to want to look attractive too.
Of course.
So I think we can work with them on the parking lot as it's being proposed and under development. And I'd have to go out at night to take a look at it. With the LED lighting now, it's much better and downwash, and just make sure it's got the shields on it. So if it looks like the old barn lighting out front, yeah, they'll probably mimic that throughout the parking lot. The driveway going in, I wouldn't be as concerned, you could do some solar mackerel lights for the side or something like that, something simple versus actual street lighting. I know we've had some revisions in the past, but the streetlights aren't on the plan. The development, that was great.
Richard referenced the good name of.
Policy for lighting, yep. We're working on DOT permits still, we've got our decimal readings, we're limiting to 249, so that limits the mass gathering. I would say maybe the condition would be if they exceed the 249, then they'd be under the mass gathering ordinance.
It kicks in at 250.
250, yeah. They should have a paint entrance, DOT is probably going to require that. Two fifty, yeah. The, should have a paint entrance. DOT is probably going to require that in the entrance, just so you can pull it in and out without kicking it. Curbs in. Have you thought camping at all? Are you prohibiting that?
Yes.
Yeah. So I'd be good with it. I'd be good with a condition in there that the commercial aspect doesn't have any camping in it. And if something changes.
There's a campground behind it.
There is. It is full all the time though, but.
Well, you can almost have a walking path to the campground.
There actually might be.
There is.
Is that in a biting lot?
I think there's a slow in between or something.
That's the winding lot.
Yeah.
That's where the guy was coming through.
Crowd control. I would think one crowd control individual clearly identified for each seventy-five people. So when you're pulling into the event, somebody's got a vest on and he's packing cars like he's dead in the airport or something. So just clearly working with that.
So we're just.
Yeah. Oh, she knows.
Oh, she knows. She's got, she's got the best.
So are you thinking?
Cause that's Portuguese princess on there.
Uh, one crowd control person per seventy-five cars or people. So, you know, I think we have a hundred and fourteen car spaces right now. So two people would cover that, but you potentially have more people, right?
Correct. Yeah. Cause that, they can help inside the event in case there's, we all have to get out and stuff like that. And I noticed at weddings, they tell how many people are there because they set the plates up.
Yes.
And you know how many people. Cause that'd give you a good, and it's not like we're coming down to count or anything.
Oh, yeah.
It's, you may find that number is high or low and you may actually need more help. So.
Anybody else? Does that mass gathering limit, include personnel operating the facility or just the guests?
I would say yes. Signage will take care of once they get going on that. Any off premises signs of the DOT signs, the little ones you get and put out there.
The inquiry with DOT was just for the group cut. So it's good. Where the.
Right. Yeah. I think we would. Yeah. And we'll want to make sure that they're okay with the rest of it too. They want a full plan drawn, so.
We had the discussion about changing that angled entry exit to a ninety degree.
Yeah.
Right angle.
Wish I hoped for help when it's slowing people down.
They could pass your mother, they do not. We're talking.
Anybody else? Maybe, maybe at this point before we vote, we should take care of the conditional use permit questions. That you have in your packets. Similar to what we did last week with Camp Tulsa.
Oh, thank you.
This is the same thing that you guys have looked at already.
You can fill it out. We'll give it back to us.
Everybody good? I'll throw them. Throw out what you're feeling is. Uh, the use will not have an adverse impact on spawning grounds, fish, aquatic life, bird, or other wildlife habitat. Well, I don't know. You think it's an, I mean, I think it could be.
No.
Well, I think it's, because it's a not in there, I think it becomes a yes, right?
Yes.
I know. We've got them all covered. We've got them all covered. The use will conserve shore color and visual as well as actual access to water bodies. I don't know. We have, we don't have water bodies, correct? You got that one? You good? All right. C. The use is consistent with the comprehensive plan.
Yes.
Yes. Traffic access to the site meets the standards contained in this ordinance. And traffic congestion has been addressed in accordance with performance standards in this ordinance. And that sounds like a yes too, based on what we've been talking about. The site design is in conformance with all municipal flood hazard protection regulations.
Yes.
Okay. Adequate provision for the disposal of all wastewater or solid waste has been made. Solid waste, we got the dumpster. We have.
We'll have approved separate plan design along the way.
So all waste regardless should be covered. Adequate provision for the transportation, storage, and disposal of any hazardous materials has been made. Hazardous material. Anybody think of any hazardous materials that we might be dealing with? We've already made provision for that.
Otherwise I think it'd be food waste.
Yeah. So I guess our answer would be yes. H. The stormwater drainage system capable of handling a twenty-five year storm without adverse impact on adjacent properties has been designed.
They're in the middle of eighty-five acres. The parking lot's going to have stormwater mitigation around the perimeter with vegetated buffets. So. We're at such a huge lot that this one here is kind of unique.
So are we in a yes or an N A?
Yep.
All right. So we're in A.
The biggest thing would be the road. The road don't see. Make sure you do that.
Yes, yes.
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 Yes. All right.
And they're not going to want puddles there anyway.
So we are on I. Adequate provisions to control soil erosion and sedimentation have been made. We had the discussion.
Prior to construction, they'll submit an erosion control plan. And keep the site stabilized during construction.
Yes.
Oh, and I, I, it was a little bit about the road when you're widening a road in the stream area of like, maybe you could use Crushstone as the fill. So there's less sanding, particularly in the, in the failure, putting in the wetland areas. So it doesn't just go down the Milton Mills Road and.
All right. So we're on J. There is adequate water supply to meet the demands of proposed use and for fire protection purposes. Well, we haven't heard from fire.
And I, when they go to do the building, they'll need fire marshal's approval from a gaster. This building's going to be fully sprinkled.
And we're in yes. The provisions for buffer strips and onsite landscaping provide adequate protection to neighboring properties from detrimental features of the development such as noise, glare, fumes, dust, odor, and the like. And I think based on what we've been talking about, should be yes again. All performance standards in this ordinance applicable to the proposed use will be met. Seems like we've covered that too. And archaeological and historical resources as designated in the comprehensive plan will be protected. I guess I assume that if in digging, you come up with something archaeological, then we deal with that. That's it. So again, in this case, could it be a yes, even though normally we end up with an N A? This would be my question.
Well, there's nothing designated there in the contract.
Right.
Yeah. So only your first one's already designated.
All right. So it is still an N A.
Trust him on the air rights.
Okay. All right. So we've covered that. Is there a motion? No, we got a motion already. All right. Do we have a motion then to approve the proposal?
I have one quick question. I think we've gone over this. What about the necessity of a liquor license or something?
There we go. Selectment's office, case by case, event by event basis.
Cause the caterer takes care of that.
So. So we would like to get our liquor license, but whether or not we'd be able to starting off, we're unsure. So that we would be hiring in outside license.
So you might have your own bar in the, in the barn eventually.
We will have a bar.
Stocked yourselves.
Yeah. Yeah.
Anything else then before we? Still looking, I think, for a motion.
I, will we accept the application for additional use credit for Richard LaBord and Andrea Brown for an event facility of two fifty Milton Mills Road?
With all the conditions that we have been discussing?
As discussed.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any other comments or questions or anything at that point?
Um, just usually we have the footnote in there that the owners are responsible for all their patrons on site. And that then the vendors have adequate insurance.
All right. All those are fair.
I mean, it's cold and steam.
Okay. So I guess we're a four oh one. All right. It's approved.
Thank you very much.
That was not the real fun.
Funny to think that we started this somewhere in the, in April, May time.
Really?
Yeah.
That's what I tried to discourage him.
Well, I, I came back and I said, it seems like you've been coming since the last meeting, maybe in July. Cause that's the first time I think that I've met you. I was thinking, well, that's two months. That's not bad. But it's longer than that.
Yeah.
Well, I've seen several venues along these lines. I think you have the potential to build a premier in the city.
That's the plan. Yeah. Thank you. We hope so too.
All right, guys. Questions from you at this point?
I don't think so. We'll be in touch. Thank you all for your time. Appreciate it.
Nice to meet you.
Thank you very much.
You too.
Thank you. Good luck.
Thank you.
Hey, go home to work.
How great, everyone. Thanks.
Me too.
Okay, next. Site visit next week. Are we still on for a site visit next week? Okay. And questioning the timing of it, I guess is what I understand.
Talking six o'clock at ten o'clock. I was trying to see what time that docked tonight.
Yeah.
Who's docked, I said?
Well, how much of a walk-in there is it? Do you know or just offhand or? So as you come off Milton Mills on the driving road. So we're not the house, what's it called? That's the house there. Boy, it's not very far off the road where we hit the town resource protection.
So it probably wouldn't take us very long to walk in there.
I wouldn't think so, especially if we're coming actually. So there's the house, the swimming pool, a garage and swimming pool. Same thing. We won't have to get out of the cow. We'll be in the town's resource protection. So it's just how much further do we go till we get to the state's resource protection? I would think thirty minutes in, twenty minutes out, we should be doing okay.
But if we meet here at six o'clock, we're not going to be there before six fifteen.
Right.
You know how that goes.
Well, if Link has his Mustang.
Just can't go too far off road.
You gotta get some big motors for it. It's an easy location to find. It's, it's the first dwelling on the left-hand side.
So sunset tomorrow is six forty-one.
And what if it's a cloudy day?
Six forty-one.
Yeah, but it's a cloudy day here in the forest.
Yeah.
That's tomorrow.
It's going to be dark earlier. Oh, if we're talking six o'clock to meet here, can we all meet here at six o'clock?
I'd assume Tom's going to go directly.
I'm going to walk down.
You're going to walk there?
Yeah.
I live next door.
Good call.
Not here, you're not here.
Yoli, you good at six o'clock?
I think so.
If we go, would you meet us at the red house? Is that the mark? I mean, if we go a little bit early to get started or at least.
Three ninety-three.
Got me. We'll probably meet at the end of the driveway, I agree.
Yeah, there's a place that they have.
A landing.
Yep.
There'll be a gathering.
And I guess in that way you can meet Yoli at six o'clock and then come up?
Yeah. If you guys get a little head start, he will come behind you.
All right. So what do we say? Five forty-five? In that way, we may not be out there in the dark. Kevin, you coming here or you going direct?
It's closer. We could just go there or here, but.
Yeah, that's fine.
I'm saying if I'm playing more, I could do that too.
Oh, I see what you mean. So why don't we aim for five forty-five? You know where it is? So why don't we just aim for five forty-five and then we'll take off from here and we'll be there at six. And that will give us the heads up on, and you guys are not going to be here. So it's basically one, two, three, maybe Joyce, if you can send her a message maybe. And you'll send something out to everybody.
I will.
So we tell her five forty-five here and then we'll go from there. Everybody good with all that? All right.
Next Thursday.
Next Thursday. Yes.
So we want to just make a kind of layout, what's it going to be looking for? So we don't just kind of get in there and.
You tell me. Yes. You're the one who knows this stuff better than any of us.
Well, we're all looking to.
Yep.
To see where, to see what basal area of thirty square feet per acre looks like, right? So we probably want to try and get at a peak of that.
Yep. If he's got an area of that. I think the main thing Steve was thinking of is this is town resource protection. And then we're going to keep walking to state resource protection to see the difference in the area. It'd be great if he could tell us this is thirty square feet of basal too.
Yeah. And then. Wasn't it sixty was like another threshold? I'd have to, I mean, I was just trying to think what we're actually going to be looking for.
Will, will he need to be thinking out to us the differences or are we going to be able to recognize the differences?
Well, it's hard with the terrain. Cause if it's like a little hill or something, you can't see a full acre at once.
Oh.
It depends where, what the terrain is like. You know what I mean? Like you're standing there on the road, you're looking out on a four acre parcel, say. And, you know, it's all flat. And that's one thing. But then you're in there and it's like this, it's a little bit harder to.
Sure.
I mean, I think it's going to be clear when we get to the state's resource protection, because it's going to be ten acres of open wetlands. It's the town resource protection where we're going to be looking at what could be great farm land, great soils and, and that. So.
Ken, I got a quick question on that map. Does the stream divide that lot from the lot to the, to the, to the east?
That starts running down through here. Then I would assume it travels up this way.
Oh, it's a little river, right?
Yeah. Well, it's one of the.
One of the major areas of it.
Yeah.
And that flows this way, right?
Right. So, yeah.
All right. Anything else from you again?
For this or in general?
In general.
Upcoming zoning proposals, these are going to come quick. Some of the things we're looking at is additional dwelling units. Which is additional dwelling units, two families.
Per lot.
Per lot, but maybe attached or detached. And we looked at this about fifteen years ago and nobody's used the ordinance. Cause it's easier to subdivide than what the ordinance requires. And we looked at it years ago as far as the kids coming back to live with the elder parents or the elder parents coming back to live with the kids. And something more than. than a full-blown two-family, multifamily unit. Senior housing's another thing. We've had prop up that the town ordinance really doesn't address, whether it's a senior housing complex, apartment building of some size or something, a sign ordinance is going to be needing work, because we've got the marijuana thing that's still poking around.
They already have a hearing for that?
Yes, we've had a couple of special nights.
Integrated committee.
The Triumph.
It's a turnaround, people are interested there.
There was the first meeting.
Yeah.
I didn't go this way, but there was the first meeting.
Yeah. A couple of other little things, too. So we're into September, or I would think the next month or so, we'll try to focus on some stuff and see what direction and what wants to go on.
And really, it's a long-range thing, heading back to next June.
Correct.
But not anything earlier than that.
But it always seems like by the time we start, and then we're, we're in such a short window to hammer down and have public hearings and...
Yeah, the holidays and everything, and then all of a sudden having to come back after the holidays and...
Yeah.
Ken, have you heard with any discussions around with the briefer moratorium thing? Is the vanity thinking about how a facility of one kind or another, a brownie shop or whatever, would affect zoning and assessments?
Property assessments? Yeah.
I mean, if you live next door to one of these dispensaries or something.
Yeah.
Curious.
In general, and I haven't seen the surveys, there's a bunch of surveys out there, but in general, the feeling I'm getting is retail, people aren't as concerned as the social clubs. There's not a lot of support behind social clubs for it. So the grow facilities or manufacturing, the big issue we see is the actual extraction from the waste, the leaves, when they extract the THC out of that. One of the extraction methods they're using is butane. They're pushing the butane through the product to get the residue out, which obviously is extremely explosive. So that's where the state is having the biggest issues from. And some of the issues they've had were, people will order a case of the butane bottles, which is about this big, and there's 12 in a case, and one of the fires in northern Maine, I think there were 12,000 to 15,000 cases of that. So when the fire starts, it's just, so that's, the more concern we see is how it's being processed versus just, like, we're just agricultural, like the blueberries and potatoes. So that's some of the stuff we are trying to maintain.
What is on the books now, and what are they deciding with this early legislative session?
It's a moving target. I know we've got a class next month or the month after. In the class, it still says, we may not know the answers for, you know, is there moratorium? Are they going to kick it down the road? Are they just not ready? And everything goes back to, well, we called Colorado, and they said this is how they handled it, so. Which is good, that there's other states that are ahead of it and have dealt with a lot of it, so.
Yeah, but you've got to know what office you're speaking to and what you call them.
Yep.
There's been, there was an article this week in the Press Herald, and there was a mention in it that if you wanted more information, you could, I guess I didn't focus that hard on it, but something to the effect that you could get that information, at least, maybe not from the Press Herald, but maybe through the, to where it was published, kind of the thing.
Main Municipal Association is the one that we've been getting our information through.
Have they taken a stand on that and stuff yet?
No, not that I'm aware of. They're just trying to give information out.
Anything new coming up in the next two weeks?
I don't think in the next two weeks. It should just be best practical locations and things like that, but a lot of larger projects out there, so.
Yeah, we're not ready.
I think at this time of year, they'll be breaking ground next year with these people, so it's much easier when, we've got plenty of time to deal with that, versus we need to be open Tuesday.
Heard that, we were somewhere. Anybody else? Motion? Second?
Second.
All in favor?